Mark, we're calling to order our June 20th, 2024 regular board meeting. Do we have any public comments?
None.
We are going to go to adjourn to closed session.
All right. Let's go.
Are you ready? All right, we are going to reconvene our regular meeting for June 20th, 2024 of the Escandito School District. Move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. A volunteer. Thank you, Zesti.
Can I stand? Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving on to the roll call. Mark Olson was unable to make it this evening due to a family commitment. And everyone else is here. And moving on to the report out of closed session. Mr. Paulson.
And in closed session, the board took action to approve the reassignment of employee 113114 as elementary principal at Orange Glen Elementary School, effective July 1st, 2024, by a vote of four to zero. In closed session, the board took action to approve the reassignment of employee number 641382 as middle school principal at Deldeos Academy of Arts and Sciences, effective July 1st, 2024, by a vote of four to zero. In closed session, the board also took action to release employee 510517 from his or her current administrative position and reassign them to a classroom teaching position for which they are competent and credentialed for the 24-25 school year by a vote of four to zero.
Thank you, Doug. Moving on to the approval of the agenda.
I'll move approval.
Thank you.
Second.
And a second.
We need the music.
And it passes four zero.
The Jeopardy. Yeah, something, just some lights.
Something light, okay. Do you need a motion for the approval of the minutes?
Move approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting of June 6, 2024.
Thank you, Doug. Second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Zesti.
Like they do on a game show.
There, Jeopardy. And it passes four zero. Moving on to the e-Communications, public comments. We have two public comments this evening. First one will be Gwen Smith and the next one will be Andrea. Andrea, excuse me.
Good evening, Cabinet and Board. Thank you for having me. I'm the newest one on triple E.A. I just wanted to share some experiences from my time on the board or on the, on triple E.A. I am just a little bit disheartened, a little bit disappointed. Being on here, I feel when I look at our team, it's like three teams. I feel like you're the community team, you're the logistics and numbers team, and I feel like we're the heart team, like we're the voice for the families, the kids and all of that. And I felt like we're protected and when I have meetings with you all to see what's going on, there seems to be a really big disconnect on the realities in the classroom. Case in point would be the SSTs where teachers are left off and then we're asked, is that true? How long has that been? And it's been an ongoing thing. And so for me, it's shocking to hear that. It's also disheartening when we hear the accolades every week and the weekly announcements of all the great things the teachers are doing. And it doesn't seem to hit home with me that that's sincere when we're not asked, what are the challenges you're facing? What's working well? What do you need? That's missing. And so I really just feel like we're missing synergy. I don't know if synergy is even used anymore, but for me, when it's a well-oiled machine and we have your, the community component, the logistics component, the heart component, working together, we're going to get things done. But it's not, we don't have the synergy right now. So we really need to sit today and ask, why are we not connected? Because the teachers aren't the, the problem, we're not the enemy, we're the heart of the, the organization. We're, we're your voice, we're the eyes and ears, like our students are in the classroom. We're like, hey, speak up, what's going on? We have to know what's happening with the students to take care of our classrooms, like you need to know what's happening with us. And I just want to say, when you ask a teacher, why do they get into education? You know it's not the salary, you know it's not the income. It's we want to make a difference for people. So I feel like if you lose sight why we're here every day, that's a problem. And I just wish you had a big sign that said, we all work together. We're the heart, we're the voice for the kids. And we just want you to not put the dog and pony show about, oh, like this is what's happening at this school? What do you guys need? What are the biggest challenges? I want to see more real conversations. Come in the classroom and ask us, not even in a survey situation, like get to know us. Because we're here every day to support the district. I've been in four districts, I've been here twice. This is the district I choose. I choose EUSD. I love it. But we're not, we don't have the synergy. And that's what I'm looking for and I want to voice that concern. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Hello, Board and Cabinet. Happy summer. To the staff, parents, and stakeholders that are watching, I thank you for staying involved and informed. As your triple E.A. grievance chair, I am speaking during my summer break to bring light to the fact that triple E.A. is engaged and fully focused. We're paying attention. I'm here to bring to the public record that there were proposed draft items in the 24-25 LCAP that were a direct contract violation. Thank you, Dr. Filia, for your response to Action Items 1.2 and 3.1 and your statement to adjust the 24-25 LCAP draft to reflect the appropriate contract language. We see that it was in fact updated. Thank you. In the future, triple E.A. asks that you make a collaborative effort to work with us to help ensure that contract language is not violated, especially in public documents. Your union affiliates ask that we are more involved to make sure that we don't have any labor disputes. We do ask you to continue to look at Action Item 1.3, where it is implied how elementary teachers use their time similarly to TLCs should also be removed. Elementary teachers are already provided specialty time during the proposed wheel enrichment to utilize under district authority. Please do not imply that the district is deciding what elementary teachers are to do during their preparation time. Again, thank you for the time and attention to detail. We are available and ready to work together to ensure that violations are not made. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Moving on to public hearings, we have done. And CSEA, do we have a representative from them? We do not. Triple E.A.
Good evening, President Houston, Dr. Ibarra, School Board members and Cabinet. I'm extremely disappointed with what happened at the last board meeting. Romero and Lila worked very hard to begin a collaborative relationship that was meant to bring this district to a new level of success. Triple E.A. and EUSD broke barriers by letting our walls down and working together toward a common goal. No one can deny the beauty of that collaborative effort during the pandemic. Triple E.A. leadership is unanimous in the vision of a true collaboration between labor and management, and this philosophy has become an expectation of our union leaders. Throughout my first term as president, I have carried that collaborative vision with me, as have our triple E.A. leaders in our membership. We have listened, we have strategized to support each other's common goals, and we have vowed to do whatever it takes to do what is best for our students. Nothing triple E.A. has done since we promised to work together would warrant what happened at that last board meeting. In fact, communication has shut down. This did not come from triple E.A. All we have asked is to be part of the conversation over things that directly affect those staff that are the boots on the ground. We have asked that you take things off of our plates and support our working conditions, and we have asked that you trust us to make the best decisions for our students without micromanaging us into a one-size-fits-all process that isn't working. To hear us described as exclusionary is off-base and there is nothing to warrant that comment. EUSD was exclusionary when they wrote the Community Schools Grant that we now have to fix. To laugh about your own lack of understanding of terms such as bargaining unit member and democratic designation process was embarrassing to watch. To assume that triple E.A.'s MOU was in any way anything other than to protect our voice is unfortunate. There would have been no need to create an MOU had there been an open line of communication and collaboration from the beginning as requested by triple E.A. Triple E.A. has pledged its dedication to doing what is best for our students and we find ourselves having more integrity than the district and the school board. Yet we continue to work to improve this district because we know the potential that remains unrealized. Our teachers, social workers, counselors, nurses, school psychologists, and speech-language pathologists have all dedicated themselves to the Escandito community. To make a comment that there is no point in paying the union is disrespectful, in poor taste, and insulting. The comment was offensive, especially coming from someone who has not only been supported by our association but has paid union dues for 26 years. To enjoy the perks and protections of a union and then laugh about there being no point in paying for it is distasteful. I would prefer to have a board member who shows respect for whom they serve than someone who finds humor in insulting them. And yes, your mic was on. At least we know how some of our members of our school board feel about us, as opposed to being made to believe you actually listen to our input. When triple E.A. sat in meetings with school board members and pledged to work together, we meant it. Triple E.A. stands before you this evening to request that you do what is best for this district. You may not care for me and you may not care for my association and the association that we've built together, but you have to work with us and we aren't going away. We are asking to communicate. We are asking to co-construct this district. When triple E.A. has had a true co-construction of things, they were executed beautifully. We have chosen to work with you and have been gracious in rectifying the poor decisions that the district and school board have made. We have made a conscious effort to work quickly and efficiently to get the Community Schools Grant off the ground. We have pointed out the many mistakes made in the writing of the grant. Triple E.A. members are not getting anything out of this grant other than more work. And we aren't demanding salary increases from grant money that belongs to the community. Perhaps you should spend less time discussing school board crossing guards and definitions that you should know and ask why our sped costs have skyrocketed when we have declining enrollment. Have you asked for the data that shows that all of these programs are working? Or is it just skewed presentations that you see that are usually manipulated to make things look good? I would love to see the school board scrutinize these presentations the way you did the MOU. For example, why does goal number three of the LCAP discuss safety and security yet has professional development and combo mitigation as ways that you're handling that goal? Do iPads keep us safe? Those are listed under the same goal. The LCAP has also indicated that programs are assessed with certain metrics that are misleading to the public to justify the expense that they incur. One of the largest complaints from teachers is the lack of involvement with the CSAP process, which has shown a rise in sped costs since its inception with repeated recommendations to test students with behaviors per sped. That is not appropriate. The LCAP has no indicator of effectiveness listed to review this process. These are the issues that come from a lack of collaboration with the people who are in the classrooms directly working with your students. Your answer to these budgetary issues was to cut teachers. Triple E.A. is not your problem, you are your problem. Here's an easy question to ask. Are you ready to do what's best for this district or hold to some political agenda for votes and accolades? Hold your district leadership accountable. Stop throwing money at programs that don't work, claim poor, and then blame teachers for poor student outcomes. Stop adding forms and more work to our day. Stop allowing for this district to remove teachers from processes that are necessary to support our students. Triple E.A. wouldn't need to fight so hard to have our voices protected in an MOU if you didn't continue to pretend that you care about us and our input just to ignore it and believe that collaboration is showing a presentation to the design team. Actions speak louder than words and it's clear that this district is more focused on doing what's easy than doing what's right. It's unfortunate that triple E.A. needs to point this out along with all of the mistakes that are continuing to be made through numerous contract violations. Their solution is to hire another director or another coordinator at the district office to help the people already there. Perhaps the question is, why are high-paid district employees struggling so much that they need another high-paid person to come in and help? I find it unsettling that triple E.A. leaders and members can strategize to solve many district issues and I'm really exhausted by the words, "we told you so." It's also very deflating to realize that some of our school board members find such little value in our ideas and our feedback. Our triple E.A. board is happy to spend our next meeting with you, educating you on how collaboration works and how it's achieved. It's time for you to follow our lead and do what's right for this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to number written communications. Number five, we have none, all have been distributed. And moving on to F, consent calendars, anything we want to pull off the consent calendar? Or talk about prior to? Hearing nothing, or I needed approval of the consent items? Motion and second.
Move approval of the consent calendar as presented.
I need a second.
Second.
Second, thank you, Doug.
There you go.
Thank you.
And it passes four zero. Moving on to section end, discussion and/or action, N1. Educational Services Local Control Accountability Plan Adoption.
Yes, this is for approval of our LCAP plan as presented at our last board meeting. And we did make those edits, as mentioned prior, with feedback from triple E.A. around some of those items. And so this is up for approval.
Thank you. Do you need a motion? Or discussion?
Oh, I have, yeah, I have a bunch of questions.
No problem.
Hold on, I got to bring up my notes. Unless someone else wants to go. And it was, a lot of it was, I mean, I understand you're not in charge of the formatting. Oh my goodness, it was so hard to follow what went with what and, you know, where the overlaps are and where it's coming from last year and this year. So wait, hold on, I have, I have a bunch of notes. Since it was 142 pages, I tried to put, put the page number so I could follow. So I apologize if I'm rambling on this. So on the, so the first page, is that, the first two pages, those are supposed to be for the parents or the community to easily see. Okay. And are the, is that chart, is my mic on? Is that chart, like the pie chart where all the number, numbers are jumbled? Is that going to be corrected before it's published? If it can be?
Yes, absolutely.
And I feel like we've had it in years past, but I, I don't know. I would just love to see a simple, even a simplified summary to the community again so they can really see where it is, because no one's going to read through all this. And that's the shame, and I think that was the goal of the LCAP, is to create something that the community can see where we're spending our funds and how effective they are. So I would, I would like to see something that we just do on our own to really communicate, Kate, to the community. This was your input, this is what we've come back with as, as our solutions for, especially if we want their buy-in and we want the unions' buy-in and teachers' buy-in and parents' buy-in, you know, to show, these are the, what we took in and this is, this is where your money is going without having to read 142 pages. Okay, so moving down to like the first section where it's the goals and actions. So those were the last, so I'm understanding, these were the last three years view of everything? Like of our, of what the goal was and what the outcomes were, correct? So, and I wasn't here for the beginning of it, so where did, so if you guys, you know, we're at, just even the first one, we were at forty-one, minus forty-one percent for points below standard or forty-one, forty-five point one points below standard for English learners. And again, I get lost, sorry. And so then the goal after three years was twenty-five, to be twenty-five points below standard for English learners. Am I reading that? Like between the two columns. But we only, by the end of it, we only ended up at forty-two and a half. I'm just making sure I'm reading it correctly. And that's on page two of the fir, just the first goal.
Yes.
Which page within the entire document?
I know, it's the two, two of, yeah, page five, sorry. Two of twenty-nine. Yeah, that's confusing too, that there's multiple page sets.
Yes, so what, if you follow across, it goes English learners, if you follow with English learners under each of those columns. So you're correct in how you're, it's not lined up, but yes.
No, that'd be too easy to read if it was lined up from the state. But, okay. So I'm not trying to be harsh, so if we're saying we took all this effort, all this money, and we moved... Okay, again, I lost my, oh, no, 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 I'm, English learners were forty-five points below and now they're seventy-two points below.
Right.
Standard, sorry, again, sorry. So we went from forty-five to seventy-two points below standard after all of these programs and money spent. Just as an example, I'm just picking. Right?
Yes.
So if we did nothing, if we stuck to, stuck to where we were in two thousand, and I know we had COVID, and I'm not trying to be dramatic, but I mean, if we stuck to what we had, we would have at least stayed the same. I mean, that, that's such a huge downturn for how much effort and money was put into these programs. That's hard for me to, and I actually called Doug, I'm like, am I reading this correctly? Am I understanding what these numbers are actually saying? That in three years, we went, like just on this one group, we've gone down almost thirty points.
And this demonstrates the learning loss that we've suffered, yes.
I know we had COVID in there, but that, that is still extremely significant for this much amount of effort and services we've provided.
Yeah, obviously, something's not working.
That, that's what I'm trying to get at. Yeah, that something's not working because that is very...
Disheartening.
Yes. Okay, so, and I apologize because there's a lot. So, I mean, we, okay, I'm trying to...
It makes it hard because it's not lined up straight and wrong.
Well, that's, that's true, but I'm just, the, the point of it, it is though there's, there, I understand there was a learning loss, but that is a huge, huge dip and a huge disservice to our students. And that, that's my problem. These, these are actually students to me, these are actually students that are, that are in our community that went down so significantly in this time. It's very disheartening. A couple of things, as I was trying to focus on a few things, I did like the highlight of how effective the family liaisons are and how many offerings we have for families. Because those, those ladies work so hard and it shows that the amount of engagement they're able to get. Now, there was one question on there, because it, and let me see if I made the page number, but it was like we had thirty-six thousand offerings and then the final column says, our goal is to have about eighteen thousand offerings by the end of the three years. Let me see if I can find that. I think it's page thirty, so it must have been thirty of one of, one hundred and ten, because that's what I went by. Yeah, so two point one zero, number of parents, guardians participating in workshops or other events. So in 2023, it's thirty-four thousand parents participating, I'm sorry, not, yeah, thirty-four thousand parents participating, and then by 2026, we're only expecting eighteen thousand parents to participate. Page... Thank you. I appreciate it. I almost had to turn it, I was like, oh, this is so hard. Because the parent, the, right above it, the two point nine, it only dropped slightly, the amount of parent engagement workshops and events. But that seems a significant amount to drop the parent participation.
I do see that.
Is it possible that that's a typographic error or a, just a substantive?
I believe, I'm looking at Kathleen, but yes, I believe it is a typo. Is that correct?
Okay. Okay, that's great. Good to, glad to hear it. The, I, uh, let's see. I did like on page twenty-three, which is probably the first set of numbers, and I'm sorry, I'm jumping around, the twenty-three out of twenty-nine pages, that there was no direct connection between combo mitigation and class size reduction and achievement that we have found, that they called that out in the report, that they don't see any connection between it or our results don't show any connection to that of increased, increased achievement.
Page twenty-six. Now, twenty...
Yeah, twenty-three of twenty-nine.
It's page twenty-six in the document?
Page twenty-six in the document. I, I do know that it, they were not able to determine that there was a direct connection, which would be different than saying there was no connection.
Thank you for the clarification. I'm just saying, we, we don't see, we had, we had, you know, the four point, four point five million spent on it. There was no significant increase in achievement results.
Oh, I see.
I think that's important to note, especially when we're trying to find, determine what programs are actually working.
And I know, we, we don't want to use this as an excuse about COVID, but that was a significant impact, especially for English learners. If you are in a hybrid situation and, and parents had a choice, especially that first year, to sit behind a computer and be at home, and parents made that choice, and you are limited English, there was no way for you to, you lost a year or two in proficiency. You lost, like it was as you were, you were coming to school, but there was very little...
So, but then coming back, now, now that they've been back a couple of years, but we haven't seen that, any growth. I mean, have we seen that much, we really haven't seen any growth.
Right, and that, when you look at it from, from the macro level, like how many kids are proficient or advanced, then you're going to see, if you are, it, it, we have to dive deep. And that's what we have to get, work on these metrics as far as look, what's below the surface as we've started to look at. What, are we moving students who are English learners? Is that the right, you know, are they going from level one to level two? It's the LPAC scores that we have to be hybrid-focused. And again, even looking at, the LPAC test changed... And again, even looking at, the LPAC test changed dur- during the, these four years of metrics, right?
Yeah.
Even the CAFS test changed dur- during this period of time. So we're trying to come, we're forced to compare apples to apples and they just are not.
Well, and that's one of, one of my notes is maybe we should, as a district, should pick one thing to be consistent on because.
We are gonna, that's what we have done.
Because it's too easy to sh-, yeah, I, yeah, if it's eye-ready, it's eye-ready. And we just have a consistent metric, but that's what we're looking at and that's what we're.
And all these measures, like it'll be one set of metrics that we're looking at. And it's maybe these activities are focused on these metrics, these activities are focused on those metrics. So it's not all over the place and we're looking for it, but it's really streamlined. Because several, like attendance, we want to see an impact in attendance. Whether it's through ELOP, whether it's through our, our re-engagement team that we're spending. And we're not sure which one's going to make that, but we want to see attendance looking at and then look to see, okay, what evidence do we have that that's increased? We've got to have these measures that are very concrete, definable, and everyone knows what they're, what they're looking at. You know, there's so much that happened in these years of just even that first year out of COVID that in order to have a true measure, measure of something is working, you've got to build, create it and give it time to, to truly articulate it, but no year has been the same. And that's what's frustrating. No year has ever been the same so that we can stick with something long enough for it to be. And for different circumstances, you know, you've got a budget that, that suddenly gets thrown at us and you have to start making reductions. Pandemic, you've got a myriad of things like, we thought the, the year coming out of COVID was going to be easy, but guess what? There were a lot of families that didn't, they weren't ready to come back. So we had school open. But even that first year of reopening, that second year, we still had, and we were looking at the Swiss cheese approach of kids who came back but were caught early on in how many quarantines did they get caught up in? First graders that probably came to school half the time, but then because of COVID, because the whole class had to be in quarantine, two to three times, they lost weeks of instruction and months of instruction.
There are large blocks of missing pieces in the educational process of each individual student. And that's why I think it's so important that we know where each student is.
Right.
And make sure that we're grouping kids according to their needs and, and where the gaps are.
Right.
But the most important thing, and I think you hit on, on that one first, is the attendance.
Right.
If they're not sitting in the seat, they're not learning. They're, they're, they are missing out on important lessons.
Right.
And so that happened during COVID too. Kids spaced out, you know, they might've had their face on the screen.
Right.
But a teacher can't monitor on, on one little screen that many, that many faces and make sure, I know, I know, there was one teacher who talked about a little girl who kept falling asleep. And she spent most of the time trying to wake the kid up during the class on, on the, on the computer screen. But I think that's one of the biggest components is the attendance. But also knowing where each one, each child is because they all have different levels.
Right.
Some, some didn't suffer that much during COVID because they had other stimulation.
And we are making efforts on using eye-ready and really looking at that stretch growth to be able to have a common assessment that's helping us to make better decisions around some of that instruction and the differentiation. It, it is the, the impact, right, that, that's, and, and we know this across, not just here in other districts as well as far as those impacts regarding their academic loss and there are also the social emotional impacts that they've had, I know, coming back. There were a lot of kind of challenges that we saw as kids and how they were acting or kind of relearning how to act and, and be in school and be in class. So efforts have gone into that as well. But yeah, they're, they're, they absolutely have been significant challenges. But the academics are, are an urgency for, for all of us to make sure that we're responding. And work has been happening around that too.
And so really, when we look at what is our LCAF story, like what is it that we're funding? And I wish it could be just a few pages long, right, and, and look at what the visuals. Unfortunately, we, we come up with, okay, this is our, this is what we're doing. And then we have to squeeze it in to this template that is just, I mean, that's what happens when Sacramento gets a hold of a good idea. Uh, it's supposed to be transparent to families. So what is it that we're doing with our funds to increase student achievement, to increase engagement with our students, to raise attendance level? And that's, okay, we've got, what's going to move the needle? We truly believe that when our teachers work and plan together, they're going to do outstanding things for our kids. They need the time and they needed, uh, put all their heads together to figure this out, work with individual keys. So our teachers are key, giving them that time, especially in elementary, during the wheel collaboration time is key. So we're putting dollars towards that initiative. It's our, going to be our second year, but we know that schools that are embracing it, schools that are way, uh, are doing some outstanding things, not, and it's taking time to get there. So it, we're, we're doing the wheel collaboration time. And then also the kids are getting some awesome extracurricular activity, enrichment activities during the school day. So what else are we doing? We've got our family liaisons. Crucial to get the families involved, connected into services. We've got social workers that are, that are working with all our families. That's our LCAF story. We've got, what are the others? Our LVN. We needed to have our nurses there, especially for now that the, the world of after-school program is starting to engage. We've got these robust afters, you know, that just has exploded, having after-school opportunities for our students. Summer school enrichment, and now we're pairing it, pairing it with intervention services. Breaks my heart that we had to make a decision between all of this and interventions, but we know intervention is going to still happen because it has to happen. And that's through either after-school, but also during the instructional day. Having common times where groups are working together through the universal access time. So intervention is happening. Really, when you look at this, it's, the, the LCAF template has evolved from what are you doing for, for, like those crucial, what I just mentioned, to describe your whole budget now, everything that you're doing and put metrics and it, to, to everything. We're like, oh, okay, we have a payroll department we have to pay for. What are their metrics? You know, it's, and I'm using hyperbole, but is it expanded into like, we don't even, like we had to explain our SIR funds. Our SIR funds, we were throwing money just because we had to survive. We had it, we had to decrease class sizes because we had to do that to be able to open up school. We spent a lot on, you know, masks and all that PPE. So that's why the, the system, the, the Sacramento has to continue to do this. The LCAF had to continue to get there, but these metrics and even this, even the county has realized and the state has realized that this template, it's not serving its purpose. It is forcing everyone to look at it from a, you're being forced to, because they want to make sure you're not ignoring a subset of our, of students, i.e. our English learners, our students with disabilities, our students. And so, but for us, we have large amount of these groups. So for us, anything we do for English learners, we do for all because the majority of our students are. Like half of our students are English learners. Eighty percent of our students are undu-, we have an eighty percent are either free and reduced lunch or, or English learner or foster youth. That's eighty percent. That's our unduplicated count. And so therefore, what we do for a group of students, it's geared towards helping the students achieve. And then, but then the template forces us to look at, okay, what are you doing for English learners? Well, it's the same thing we're doing for kids that are free and reduced lunch. So there's a lot of repetitive natures, like is the family liaison just for English learners? Or does it help our families in need? Does it help our, our foster youth? And so that's why you see it, that, I mean, it, it is hard to read. It's hard to put together. I look at the, the person who put it together, Kathleen, having to, to, understanding, because she was part of all our decision-making and part of the board workshops, is pulling all of that of what we're going to do into this impossible template.
I got more, but keep going. Break my, break my time up.
Let me break one up. As we talk about the impossibly complicated template, could I just, and I think this is just a typographic error, but page twenty-eight in the overall document, so page twenty-five of twenty-nine, we've got year two outcome, year three outcome. I think, uh, this is just, um, a cut and paste that didn't quite get done correctly. But we've got both sets of data referring to the chicks during the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And I think one of those data sets may be intended for a di- a different year. If you look at, so for example, year two outcome says forty-five percent of seventh grade students completing the Healthy Kids Survey during the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three school year reported feeling safe. And then in the next column over fifty-four percent, it says exactly the same thing with a different percentage. So I think that's just a.
It should have been twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four.
Potentially, except twenty-three, twenty-four data is listed over as a desired outcome. So there's just, there's.
At the top, it says twenty-three, twenty-four.
Yeah.
Year three outcome should be twenty-three, twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five.
So it potentially should be twenty-three, twenty-four, but I think we just.
The desired outcome for twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five, we're talking about next year.
No, the, I think this is reporting on last year. The, I think this is reporting on the year that we just finished. But my point is, if you look at the year three outcome, it's reporting data that is stated to be
Twenty-two, twenty-two.
Twenty-two, twenty-three, and I, I, there's just an issue there. Thank you. Could I just ask a question on, oh, shoot, and I don't know which page it is. It's, I've got it as page twenty-one, but I don't know. The one point one, learner-centered collaborative, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Just wondering, Dr. Ibarra, if we could please just clarify the ongoing need for that learner-centered collaborative?
Yes, and one of the, one of the five big moves, or several of five big moves in the framework for the future is how are we going to make sure that we may, keep the momentum going? And having, um, learning that is authentic for our students, personalized as much as possible, standards-based, and really looking at making sure that all students have access to, to this. Doing all those things requires professional development, providing time for people to go deeper. Definitely with the wheel collaboration time is going to help with that, get that ingrained. But we've got, one of those is also, we have schools in redesign. So we had four, four schools in redesign and we need to keep, keep the momentum going because they need to now, they've got the, they've got the redesign plan, but we want to continue to support them so that they can dive deeper into it to make sure that the learning piece, the design of the lessons continues to be rigorous. And, and not just, okay, it's highly engaging, but really hitting the standards as we need them to be. And so we're going to need support for cohort one to go through and we want to bring on cohort one. And so that's going to be, right, we also need to provide, continue to provide professional development for our administrators who's going to, who will continue to lead this work. So that's what's embedded in that. And then also there's a fourth component is lesson design for those, for open to non-design schools. So there's, uh, different ways this year. We had people participate either through, hey, I'm interested in this. Can I be part of this group? And so we're going to continue that lesson design of what does this look like as teachers? Teacher leaders want to continue to expose. So it's going to be for those basic on services. We're no longer needing them to help facilitate the design process in the design team because the framework is designed. And it's really just, uh, keeping the momentum doing. So we need their expertise to continue to work with these schools, especially that are in design. So we don't leave them hanging and we need to continue to, to support. Because as you know, every, every school starts off and, and with this great idea, they get into it. They need to continue to work out the kinks and, and have a platform for them to have that time to do it with the expertise of the learner-centered collaborative. So that's what it is, especially now that we'll have close to eight schools in redesign.
All right. Thank you for that clarification.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Well, because I'm not, I'm not a big fan of the Learning Center Collaborative anyway, especially when we're such a tight budget. I, I can't support the Learning Center Collaborative. I mean, we have Quantum, who has done a fantastic job. They, our own staff developed it from the ground up. I don't see why we can't do the same thing with the talent we have at the district already. I mean, the design team, our community and our staff came up with all those ideas.
Right. Exactly.
I don't want to pay someone two hundred and thirty thousand dollars to facilitate that. That, that is not very effective for me for when we're, we're so tight on what we need. When we've done it before and done it well in our district.
Well, but we also had, uh, it's easy when you have, it's not so easy. You can talk to Jo- Joanne and Colin and it really took a whole team. I mean, we had the whole media tech department working with Jo- Joanne. So there was a lot of people that were involved in, in grading, creating that school. But what happened is then you hire people with the vision to bring, bring them on board and they've done a wonderful job. Then you look at Conway. They needed the expertise of, of the expeditionary learning. Because there was a model and when you're looking at a redesign of an existing school, that's a lot more challenging. Because you got to get, bring people on board. And, and you'll have an opportunity to see when we come back in the fall, as we have the redesigned schools presented to the board. But you see, what, what you will see is a group of educators that are, that own the design process that are selling it to their colleagues and the whole school has been re-energized. And they're all working towards this common goal of having this type of learning happening at their school. Very akin to Conway, very akin to, to, to Quantum. But it was a heavy lifting and it's something that we had, we had a huge tech department in Joanne and Colin that we pulled out of the classroom for a whole year. So, and this one, we'll be able to maximize and have four schools at once. If we did one school at a time, we'd probably be there, but it would take us twenty-three years. So, you know, we're trying to get this in five years. So if you're asking, this is something that I absolutely think it's critical for us to keep that momentum moving.
As a, uh, just a point of comparison, when we had Conway going through effectively the same type of redesign process with EL learning or expeditionary learning at the time, does anybody remember how much that was costing each year?
I was probably what? I know we had to do a full-time person there, a full-time coach that we had to pay there at the school. So it was about a hundred and fifty thousand for the one school. Then we had to pay the professional development through EL. So I would say close to two hundred and fifty thousand is.
For one school.
For one school. Every year. No? So I know it's about a hundred and fifty for the person and there was probably two hundred. Yeah.
Okay. Got it. Okay. And so in this case, and that process at Conway, that took how many years approximately before it was really going? Seven, seven?
Seven years, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you, Andrea, yeah.
And again, the pandemic stretched it out because they were ready to go to accreditation before the pandemic hit. And then they needed the data to follow that and there was a year of no testing and.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Well, I'll just say, I, I don't agree with that one. Going back to the missing pieces of instruction, so how are we addressing that? Are we kind of almost holding the students up to, to where we fill in those gaps before we move them forward? Or we just keep going along, moving them forward and trying to piece in things as they go? What's the tactic that the district is using?
With, by using data, right? So they give assessments, they try to identify what the gap.
So they give assessments, they try to identify what the gaps are in either content area. And then the idea then, as Dr. Ibarra mentioned, that collaboration piece around the planning, having teams come together to identify what are the needs and how they can plan together to best differentiate and fill in those gaps. Whether it's with OG, Orton-Gillingham, filling in those kind of, in the, on the literacy side, if they were trying to fill those in. But really, it's just trying to be very strategic and trying to identify what are the needs, having the team come together and then plan together and then deliver the instruction that they need.
And it's a two-pronged approach. You've got to, you've got to keep the kids moving in the standards because they will continue to learn the other standards. But you also have to get, you have to also go back and fill in the gaps. Because if, if we started with, we would have fifth graders in first grade and they would only be.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if we have a fifth grader who can't read, and we're still expecting them to do fifth-grade science.
Right, because the science would be engaging.
I mean, that's going to frustrate to where I would assume they would give up.
Because, and you've got to give them, you've got to continue to teach them the grade-level standard, but also remediate and fill in the gaps. And that's why the assessment component is very important for them, because you could see it's, what are those crucial gaps? Because there's, you can attack a text if you've got the straightforward phonics. And if you've got a fifth grader who doesn't know that, that's where you've got to spend a lot of the time. But a fifth grader can still think and do math, and you've got to keep that going at, at grade level as well.
But even in math, there are gaps that they might be missing, the, the division part, or the multiplication, or the fractions.
Exactly. And when you get into the fractions, it's probably multiplication. And if you know that, if we know it, we can, we can help a student, we have a better shot.
And that's what we have to determine.
Right. And that's why it's a two-pronged approach. You've got to keep the, you've got to keep the students in the grade-level curriculum, but continue to go back and identify those gaps.
Okay. My next question was, for the fieldwork experiences, I saw the, you know, the places you were partnering with. So how is that being implemented? Is, are the teachers getting a PD on that? Or how is that, you said, because I think it said every student is going to participate in a field-level experience.
Yes. So what happens is we had our science coaches who were able to develop kind of units of study that they would share with the teachers. They also have meetings with the grade-level teachers to provide them with the information, to kind of guide them on where the resources are. And then the grade-level team then would front-load and teach those pre-leçons before they actually went on into, to go do their field experience.
Field experiences, i.e. the new word for field trips.
Field trip, yeah, yeah. But it seemed like there was more structure to it than just a fun field trip.
Correct.
There's a whole, kind of like.
Great curriculum.
Yeah, with the whole, with the whole. So all, so all teachers have been trained on that?
All teachers have access to those resources, and we're going to continue to support teachers. Luckily, we are able to maintain a science coach through ELOP to continue to offer that, take leads from the schools and train them so that they can also continue to support their.
So it's optional for the teachers to participate and have it in their classroom?
It's an expectation that they do the pre-leçons before they go to the field experience.
And the teachers are doing the pre-leçons. Because they get, because they're getting, they get the kids prepared for what to look for. And, I mean, it, it's a very engaging experience for the, for the students and the teachers are, you know, every classroom that I've gone in, as they were getting ready to go on this field experience, the, the kids were able to tell you exactly what they've learned and what they were getting ready to go do and, and learn. And that's, that's like the pinnacle experience to get the students. And teachers have been doing, like, you take them to a museum, you're always.
Yeah.
Preparing them for that. So that's what it is. It's like a study guide in preparation for that.
That was just the first time I'd heard about it, so I was interested to see how that would work. I do want to point out that they said the math intervention students had a fourteen percent gain in meeting their growth goals. So I, I did want to highlight that as well. I like that. Shout out to our math intervention teachers. And then, let's see.
And we did notice that we had a very, Bridges curriculum really helped guide our instruction with that. And so we know that, that was something, we saw a lot of great gains. We had that curriculum, again, identify what those gaps are, and then the Bridges curriculum was targeted instruction in those areas.
So now we're teaching the classroom teacher how to use the Bridges, and we're expecting the classroom teacher to implement the Bridges program? Or is that, again, voluntary?
I think the idea is that we want to go ahead and offer that. I mean, for our sites, those that do have possibly intervention teachers, even if they have parent support, that's another option to try to give them the information and to train them up on the Bridges program, as well as our after-school programs. We're offering PD and kind of encouraging sites, teachers who want to teach after-school as well. And it's also being implemented, actually, in our summer program also.
Okay. And then on page twenty-three, which I think was twenty-three of one-ten, it said eighty-one percent of our unduplicated count have IEPs. That seems outrageous.
I believe that is in one-point-one-two on page twenty-three, page fifty-five of the document.
Thank you.
Page fifty-five.
I mean, so if eighty percent of our students are unduplicated and eighty-one percent of, I mean, that's going to bankrupt our district.
But I think what they're saying there, the percentage of students who have IEPs in the unduplicated group is eighty-one percent. So that's right in line with our overall unduplicated.
No, no, eighty percent of the eighty percent, eighty, eighty-one percent, right? Of the eighty percent?
No, it's just saying that there's eighty-one percent of students in the unduplicated group that have IEPs.
So is that, I mean, what does other district, how is it set with other districts?
Yeah.
I mean, how does that compare to other districts? That seems, I mean, I understand that we're, you know, three levels below.
What we're saying is, we need additional, we're justifying the use of spending dollars to help our special ed students, because that's not specifically called out in the LCAP. And so what we're saying is, our sped students are either English learner, foster youth, or free and reduced lunch. So we're saying justify the use of these supplemental and concentration dollars for our sped students as well. So therefore, they have additional needs.
I mean, if, if you want to, if you're going with the notion that because we have such an undupli, high unduplicated account, we just do it for everyone? I mean, at this point, it almost seems like the whole district is going to have to turn into a sped district if we have that many, that high percentage of students on an IEP.
Perhaps we just need to reword it.
Okay.
The intent of it is to say that when you're looking at the sped population of those students that already have an IEP, eighty percent of those students that already have an IEP are unduplicated.
And so how does that compare with other districts?
I think it's probably fairly similar.
The other districts are.
As far as done, well, that's unique to us as far as unduplicated, because we have a high unduplicated count. So as far as how many, are you asking?
Well.
Of our special ed population, do we have a high incidence rate?
But it actually aligns with our gen ed population, because our UPP count is eighty percent. So that's, that's perfectly aligned, actually.
I'm sorry, what's UPP?
Unduplicated.
Okay, okay, okay.
I, I think that, I think that the issue is in the wording of this sentence. I think Ms. Harper may be thinking that eighty-one percent of our unduplicated students have IEPs, when it's actually of students with IEPs, eighty-one percent are unduplicated.
Yes.
So I think it may just be the wording of the sentence.
We had eighty-one percent of our students had IEPs. You're right.
No, that would, yeah.
We would have already been significantly disproportionate.
Because Patrick said, didn't she say we had three thousand students with an IEP? Close to three. And do you know what that's compared, I mean, that's what I'm trying to get a handle on. Are we in the range of other school districts? Are we underserving? Are we overserving? Not to put you on the spot, I apologize.
No, that's okay. We're not significantly disproportionate. That is something that CBI looks at every single year. And so if we were to report that, we have been past for certain subcategories, but we're not currently, our numbers haven't increased. That is something that is currently not a stated.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. I asked that question. Okay. And then the, the last thing was that those charts on the end of it, at the very end of the whole thing, the dark blue ones. So are those columns, and I'll get there, sorry, I'm scrolling. This, it's the second set of columns that are more, that are profile, not landscape. The twenty, on page one-oh-six. So.
The annual update table?
Yeah. So is that last year's versus this year? Or is that how much we spent last year? The estimated actual expenditures? So like one-point-one, it was one-point-three, and then estimated actual expenditures are two-point-seven. So is, was that last year's or is that what we're expecting to increase to? I don't understand the numbers.
I think though.
Uh, yes, yes.
Kathleen, can you come to the podium, please?
Page one-oh-seven of the entire report.
Yeah, one-oh-seven, one-oh-six, one-oh-seven, yeah, yeah, one-oh-six, one-oh-seven.
Or seventy-five of one-ten.
Yeah.
Yeah, it depends where you do.
Oh, see, mine says seventy-four of one-ten. Oh, my goodness.
Well, maybe it is seventy-four.
Really good at confusing here.
That would be one-oh-six. Yeah, no, you're right. Seventy-four of one.
Seventy-four.
The estimated actual is where we think we're going to end, twenty-three, twenty-four.
Okay. So we, we expected to spend one-point-three, and we have spent two-point-seven, just like on the first line as an example.
Yes.
Like one-point-one. Okay.
So we shifted a lot of expenditures when we did the USD plan.
Oh, okay.
So that will be why some of them have significant changes.
Okay, because, yeah, that was my next question, because some of these are huge jumps, like the paraprof, like one-point-four, like paraprofessionals for kindergarten went from one-point-five to four-point-five.
Yes. We moved in the, since we went full-day kinder, we're split funding the kinder teachers, fifty percent base, fifty percent LCFF.
I see. Okay. Excellent. Thank you. That's very helpful, yeah, because it just was not clear on what, what it all means. So that would be the same for like ALC, where it went up in cost?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that clarification. Okay. I think I'm almost done with my list. So I just, it's hard to have a document like this, one that's hard to read, but at the same time, looking at our progress and comparing what we spend and the results we got, even during the learning loss from COVID, it's very hard for me to say, yes, we're on the right track, we're doing the right thing. I understand it takes time, but it, that's a very hard justification to try to make and explain to people and go, oh, no, we spent forty-five million dollars and we went down thirty points. Like, it, it's, or actually thirty, forty-five times three. I know I'm rounding numbers, but, and really don't see an increase. And, and that's very difficult for me to understand and try to justify to the public. And they go, oh, you're sitting here and you've spent all this money and our students have gotten worse. And so I'm, I'm, I'm having a very difficult time with it and very difficult time trying to explain it to people and continue to support it going forward. So that was fine.
Thank you.
Thank you for your diligence.
Yes.
Seriously. Yeah, I, I know.
Doug, do you have? Nothing other than to say that the intention of the LCAP, of the local control accountability program, was to provide more control for local districts to figure out how to spend their money to best impact. And what it has turned into, as evidenced by our difficulty in even finding things within this document, is an exercise in bureaucracy. And so I, I, I think many things have been brought out, but at the same time, I, I just have to compliment our district on, on having gotten through this process, because unfortunately, this has become about the process and less focused on the learning. So that's just my thought real quick.
Well, that's what I'm trying to get at. I'm saying, you know, if we're trying to focus on the learning, we're not seeing what we can do to support.
And I'm not sure that this particular document or this particular process is assisting us in focusing on improved outcomes. And that's very unfortunate. In fact, it may almost be more of an impediment.
It, it actually is an impediment, because it forces you to now, I mean, when I was part of a, the county superintendent pulled together some, some districts, and I was part of the superintendent group that went in and gave feedback, and we had people from the State Department on, they, they recognized this is not doing anything, and we pointed out serious flaws. It's like this template forces you to now follow this data stream, and they force you into, okay, now we need to add money here, which is not well thought out. It's like, okay, now you're being forced to put money where you don't need it, or you don't, you weren't even considering it, just to fulfill a template or a requirement, which is counter, counter to what it was. The work that we have done in design team through the Framework for the Future, I would venture to say is doing more to move us forward, and that's what we're trying to capture here. Because we have a beautiful document that is succinct to the public, that tells them exactly what we're doing and what we're shooting for. This gets lost in all the numbers. I mean, especially those pages that you were pointing out in blue, that was like added to justify where every dollar was spent. And if you didn't spend, you said you were going to spend twenty-two thousand dollars, but you only spent twenty-one thousand. Why not?
Explain.
Explain. And what are you doing? And they're trying to, so everything was a discussion by some special interest group.
Oh, I do love that there was no carryover. None of them, the carrier, carryover was always zero. But I mean, I think that's, it goes back to why our budgeting process is so important. And I think we've made a big improvement this year. But, I mean, next year, we have to move even farther forward with not spending every penny we get so we can insulate ourselves and create stable programs. We created too many programs that when these budget hard times were coming, and we knew they were coming, we have to eliminate and feel the pain of. We need to create a structure that can withstand the ebbs and flows of this state, which is always volatile, but I think we need, we need a better job of that.
And that was counterintuitive. Remember, a lot of these ester funds that we received came, like, the, the later amounts came with restrictions that you had to use, several of them you had to use for staffing, that you had to use for, which is counterintuitive, what we know, utilizing one-time funds. But again, it was part of this emergency relief fund.
All right.
To try to stabilize. Bolster the economy or stabilize, a lot of mitigate the learning loss, get people back in school. So a lot of this came, when we, we knew when we were adding these, we had all these one-time funds, to spend those, we had to add staffing to it. I mean, there was, and it came, and.
But, I mean, but still, like, I mean, the fact that we were, you know, worried over two-point-five FTEs, I hate to keep going back over to that, but, I mean, that just shows me we don't have a stable budget. And that's part of our, that is part of our charge, is to make sure we have a stable environment for these kids, so they don't have to, one year have an adventure, intervention coach, and next year don't, or have this program and next year don't. I mean, there's been so much change, and you're right, we can't get it, I mean, they keep changing the tests, you know, they keep changing the funding. So we have to take it upon ourselves and do better and create that stability for, for these students, to create long-lasting learning. Because it's, it's too, it's too jumbled, it's too chaotic. And we need to step outside this. And obviously, we're going to have to fill out forms like this, so we blew in the face, but that doesn't mean we still can't do the right thing and create the right system for our district.
That's why our presentation was not on this template, it was on the PowerPoint of, this is what we're doing, which is what we would tell our parents in our presentations. This is where we're spending our dollars on.
Do we have anything further? Do we have anything further? Joe?
No, Zesty did it all.
All right. Thank you, Zesty, for those questions.
Seriously, that was a compliment, Zesty.
Thank you very much.
You really did your homework.
So having the discussion, I do need a motion and a second to approve it.
Move approval of item N1, the 2425 Local Control Accountability Plan.
And I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Michelle?
Oh. They logged me out.
Oh, no.
Uh-oh, what happened?
It's not coming up for me. Is it coming up for you? Oh, yay. Obviously, I seconded it. No, I think once you seconded, you really are expected to move.
And it passes through to one. Moving on to N2?
Yes, this is, we're asking for approval for the Prop 28 Annual Report. This is a requirement for the Prop 28 Arts and Music Funding.
Thank you.
And it appears that the state hasn't gotten a hold of a template yet.
Please, thank you. Yes.
So I need a motion and a second, please.
I'll move approval.
Second. Have a motion and a second. And it passes 4-0. Moving on to N3, adopted budget.
So this is the adopted budget as presented at the previous board meeting, and we worked on for the last several months for approval by the board to adopt this budget for next year.
Do we need a discussion?
Yeah, I have three pages of notes. No, I'm just kidding. Thank you, you heart attack.
I know, pretty well. We can talk about it all night if you'd like.
Move approval of vitamin 3, the 2425 adopted budget.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. And it passes 4-0. Moving on to N4, approval of the committee fund balance.
As we presented in the last board meeting, this would be the, basically, the Escondido EUSD plan. So as we were transferring, that's also some of the explanation for you see some of the large changes in dollar amounts between the planned LCAP expenses and then the final expected expenditures, as Ms. Kegel explained, that moving money around has generated that change. Now, that all generated an Indian balance that was part of the USD plan that we presented in order for us to write on that for the next two to three years as we wait for the state to fix their problem.
Oh, sure. We'll hold our breath.
Well, this was the best we could do with the money we had available left in our in our bank account in order to secure our ability to remain as stable as we possibly can over that period of time. So what you see in that in that item, that resolution, is not only the existing commitment that was made a couple of years ago, a $4 million being recommitted into lines below that, such things as recession mitigation, state budget mitigation, ADA laws, things like that. But also, in addition to that, I believe I mentioned that last meeting, was the McKenzie Scott also must be committed, even though it's an investment, because it counts till towards our bottom line, and there's a 10% cap on what that amount can be by the state law, because apparently the state's budget is in good shape. So our but our reserves had to be capped at 10%. And so we need to commit that as well in order to exclude it from that calculation and stay below that 10%. But again, that money is in an investment, earning money as we speak.
I love that, that this is state, that, yeah, the state's books are good in it. They're so solvent, and that it's.
Because they're competitive.
I was surprised to see that they kept the, somehow they met that threshold.
That's a, that's an interesting calculation.
I expected probably that 10% cap might go away next year, but hopefully it doesn't, which would mean that the budget's turning around, and we should see more revenue, but.
Sure, that now they can raise taxes at will, so.
Yeah. So this item would be to commit those funds that are in the Indian balance as part of the USD plan.
So we need a motion?
I'll move approval of the committed fund balance.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second.
See, that's so much better.
It passes 4-0. Moving on to N5.
The next item is something that also goes along with our adopted budget every year. It's related to the education protection account, an amount of money that's been given to districts, I believe, since the passage of a bill in 2012. And this certifies that the $27 million that come into EPA funding is spent on the classroom. And in fact, in our budget, $27 million of our classroom teacher salaries are charged to that. So we're certifying that we're using that money appropriately.
It was used to be middle school teachers, if I remember correctly.
It's in our instructional-related services, our instructional teachers, essentially the funding codes we use for classroom teachers.
Move to approve what resolution number 2324-26.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second.
Guitar music, acoustic.
It's way better than the silence, the awkward silence.
It passes 4-0. Moving on to N6.
Regarding reinstatement case number 2022-23-08, move to extend the expulsion through the end of first semester of school year 2024, 2025, with continued placement at JCCS.
Do you need a second?
Second.
It's a roll call. Yeah.
Electronic.
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 It captures each.
Oh, okay. Because it shows that.
Yes. Passes 4-0. N7?
Regarding student reinstatement case number 2324-25, move to extend expulsion for the first semester.
Wait, is that correct? Sorry, you said 22, 23, 25.
I am so sorry. Regarding case number 2022-23-25, move to extend the expulsion through first semester of school year 2425.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Passes 4-0.
Regarding item N8, student reinstatement case number 2023-24-17, move to accept the panel's recommendation.
Second.
Motion and a second. Passes 4-0. N9?
Regarding student stipulated expulsion case number 2023-24-21, move to accept the full stipulated.
That's incorrect.
The panel.
Redo your case number, Doug.
I am so sorry.
It's 19.
Okay. Regarding item N9, student expulsion case number 2023-24-19, move to accept the panel recommendation for a full expulsion.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Passes 4-0. N10?
All right. Regarding student stipulated expulsion case number 2023-24-21, move to accept the panel's recommendation for a full stipulated expulsion.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Joe.
Joe? What?
Your vote.
I did, didn't I? I did. But I'll have to go back. Yeah, there it is. Sorry.
No one noticed because of the music.
Passes 4-0.
Well, I went on to other things.
Moving on to N11.
Seeking ratification of the MOU with AAA for the Community Schools grant.
Thank you. Need a motion and a second?
Move approval to, for the memorandum of understanding with AAA.
I'll second.
Thank you. Passes 4-0. And last, N12?
Yes, I'm seeking approval for, for an employment contract extension for Assistant Superintendent of Business Services, Mr. Andy McGuire.
Need a motion?
I move approval.
You have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
I only made it 10 minutes behind.
Passes 4-0. Moving on to, no board policies or regulations, board and staff reports.
I have no report.
No report.
No report. Joe?
I just wanted to wish everyone a happy solstice. Today was the longest day of the year.
Feels like it.
Yeah. It's all downhill from here. And the other thing is, I have to say, even a broken clock is wrong twice a day. And, hm?
Correct twice.
It's right.
Is is right. I'm sorry. Yeah. What time is it? Yeah, it's getting on there. It's not that late. And, oh, I know, it was the cell phones, that there is a move afoot to ban cell phones in classrooms.
Yes.
So this is something that I've been talking about for a long time. I've been told it couldn't be done, but apparently LA just, the school district is actually banning, planning to ban cell phones, and the state is supportive of of that. They're finding more and more that it is detrimental, and that could be one of our problems for for the decline in student achievement, because kids are churning off.
Right.
And they're on their cell phones. Plus, it's very damaging to mental health for these kids, the social media, especially during the school day, and for bullying. So I'm I'm pleased about that. And that's my report.
Thank you, Joe. And I. So now that you've brought up the topic of cell phones, I would just like to relate one piece of experience I have with this. We've been taking kids at the high school level on a number of multi-day overnight camping trips and day activities. One of our rules that we just decided early on was no cell phones. So we collect them at the beginning of the event, and kids were shocked. They were pained at first. And what we have experienced has been magical. Kids talking with each other, kids, it's not, they're more engaged with their activities at the moment. And it's just, it's palpable. I just, I, there are a limited number of things that I think we agree on. But when the kid is, when a student is not focused on cellphone management, finding a charger, finding a place to charge their phone, worrying about what is going on, there is academic benefit. There's a benefit to all aspects of the students' lives beyond beyond being able to pay better attention in the classroom. And so I'm not sure if that's something that we would be able to consider, but I think there could be huge benefits. So we'll agree on that one.
Well, especially if it comes down from Sacramento.
Thank you. And I have to report. Dr. Barlow?
Just wanted to wish everybody a happy summer, and thank you AAA for coming out. We hear you and we see you, okay? All right. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Anything from Cat yet?
I just wanted to say thank you for your support and collaboration, and much more to come.
Thank you. All right. And our next meeting, our next regularly scheduled board meeting will be held on Thursday, July 18th at 7:00 PM. At the Escondido Union School District, Carolyn Gilbert Education Center. And we will not be going into closed session again, so we are adjourned. Thank you.